Call to order the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education meeting for October 26th. Will you take attendance? Secretary Banker-Murrett?
All board members are present with the exception of Trustee Cullen, who is on a business trip.
If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for our own.
Presentant Southward, I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda.
Okay, what's your motion?
I move to amend this evening's agenda by deferring item 3C, celebrating success, Michigan Assistant Principal of the Year recognition, to a future meeting to accommodate the recipient's schedule, as well as moving item 5 Superintendent's report up to 4. And so, public comment becomes item 5.
There's a motion that's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so we are moving public comment to number 5 and Superintendent's report up to number 4 and postponing to a future meeting item number 3C. Moving on to item number 2, administrative appointments. Superintendent Lipia?
Yes, we are very excited to recommend to the board tonight an individual to fill the role of Associate Principal at Eastover Elementary School. As you know, this is our largest elementary school, over 600 students, and as we looked at the needs of the school, it made sense that they had some additional support there. And we had really just an outstanding group of candidates that applied, so we're really excited about the individual that we're bringing forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Vidlac, who's going to share with you our newest recommendation.
Yes, good evening, and I would. I'm excited to introduce Sarah Smith Conlin. She comes to Bloomfield Hills from the Avondale School District, where she is currently the Dean of Students at Auburn Elementary. Sarah earned her bachelor's in special education from Eastern Michigan University and her master's in early childhood education from Western. She started her career teaching deaf and hard of hearing students in Nevada, and when she returned to Michigan, she taught special education for the Calhoun ISD. After moving to Oakland County, she served as an early childhood specialist at the Rochester Hills Public Library and an early childhood teacher in Wald Lake. Sarah is very passionate about interventions that support student growth and accountability, involving families and plans that honor their unique learners and equitable practices that remove barriers to opportunity. When out at school, Sarah says that she enjoys taking photos of her son's baseball games and enjoying the occasional quiet weekends at home with her family. So we are very pleased to welcome Sarah in joining our Eastover family and community as our new Associate Principal on November 13th. She's very sorry that she couldn't be here this evening. She was not feeling well, she's sick, and we were actually appreciative for her not to come, but we would still introduce her, and perhaps in the future, very near future, you'd have the opportunity to meet her personally.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sarah, and we look forward to meeting you at a future meeting. Moving on to item number 3, special recognition, celebrating. Say it one more time.
Did we vote?
Well, sorry. Good point.
That's why I'm here.
You are definitely keeping me, because I totally did not move to the motion. So, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education appoint Sarah Smith Conlin as Associate Principal for Eastover Elementary with an effective date of November 13th, 2023.
There's a motion that has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Now moving on to highlight, I was so super excited to move on to the special recognition of our students and celebrating our students today. So I'd like to bring to the podium Dr. Lynn Gibson and Dr. Dan Hartley. I think I may land the doctor today.
We are honored to stand before you today to celebrate our students who are National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So what this means is that there are approximately 16,000 students nationwide that are named semifinalists in this year's 69th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program, and that is to qualify over 1.3 million juniors in about 21,000 different high schools. So it is very difficult and honorable to get this achievement, and we're excited to recognize some students tonight. So these students took the preliminary SAT-NMSQ, which is the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. We just gave that recently at our high schools again for this year's juniors, which served as an initial screener of program entrance. And then to be considered for the scholarship awards, semifinalists have to fulfill several requirements to advance, things like grade point average, additional testing, and some additional requirements as well. Students who achieve National Merit semifinalist standing are awarded this recognition for testing in the top 1% of all students nationally on their NMSQT PSAT test, and these students are eligible to compete for a $2,500 scholarship. All of these students have exemplary academic credentials, rigorous course loads, and outstanding extracurricular activities, and I can speak that they're also two outstanding human beings. So I'm really excited to welcome up here first from Bloomfield Hills High School, 12th grade students Lucy Dixon. Will Lucy come up first? Clap for Lucy.
And we are also joined by the following Bloomfield Hills Schools' grade 12 residents attending the International Academy, Anna Fisher. Nisha Singh. Not here this evening. Sure.
We're just going to take a quick picture with our board. Hello, Principal. Come on over.
We would also like to celebrate our students who achieved National Merit commended status. These students who achieved National Merit commended status are awarded this recognition for testing in the top 3 to 4% nationally on their PSAT-NMSQT. All of these students have exemplary academic credentials, rigorous course loads, and outstanding extracurricular activities. And all of these students, those who are just up here and those who will be coming up here, it's really quite incredible that Bloomfield Hills School District has so many students who qualify for these amazing accomplishments. It's atypical, really, and so we're so proud to be here and be able to recognize all of you for this incredible recognition. So tonight, we are joined by the following Bloomfield Hills Schools' grade 12 residents attending the International Academy. Megan Chiasate. Hi, I don't know if I said that right. Okay, we can still give her a clap. Davi Chandran. Sandra Fernandez. And Jake Song. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he is going to bring up some more of our awardees.
All right, I have the pleasure of announcing our award winners for Bloomfield Hills High School, grade 12, and starting with Pranil Basu. Robert Gaines. Nicholas Guttler. Arun Nagapan. Forest Quinn. And Talia Reddy. Congratulations to all of our incredible Bloomfield Hills Schools students.
So just a note, we did cover items 3A and B, so that was item 3B. So we would now like to move on to item number 4, which is Superintendent Report. Superintendent Lipia?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to share an update with the board tonight. Really what I want to focus my time on is addressing the walkout that occurred at the high school yesterday and to spend some time just walking through that. First of all, just thanking the many people that have contacted both the board, myself, our administration at the high school. We've received a lot of very important feedback in regards to how people have felt about what occurred at the school yesterday. And first of all, would share that if there's any student in any way that felt unsafe in our school yesterday, that we are truly sorry. Our mission in our school is to make sure that all students are safe all the time, regardless of what is going on around us. We think about school being that place where it is safe for our students to be, and that is our mission every single day. Now, I've only been here in the school district for a short time, but one of the really wonderful things that I've experienced here is the diversity that this community has and the remarkable students that attend our schools. And so, it's been just, it's just been such a pleasure for me to experience this, again, just over the last few months, and I know how much the school district has to offer its students and how great this community is in supporting each other. Certainly, it's understandable that while protests in our schools, from my understanding, isn't new to us, we've had them in the past, that there were some unfortunate things that were said at the walkout yesterday that made some people feel uncomfortable. And so I just wanted to clarify a few points, and this is based on some of the responses that we've received over the last couple of days. First of all, the activity at the school was not sanctioned by the school or part of a school organized club. That's been a bit of a misunderstanding for some. Also, the school district or the school has not been disseminating any materials that were related to those efforts. That was nothing that came from the school. When it came to our attention that there possibly could be a walkout, our goal, and I'm certainly willing to take any criticism as it relates to us falling short on this goal, but our goal was to have as little disruption as possible. We literally spent the day planning with local police, our staff, doing what we thought we could do to address a potential walkout at the school and how that would be as the least disruptive possible in the school. There are a variety of logistics that were talked about when we planned for this, and certainly, we understand that there's complexities in regards to how these issues are handled. But, you know, it is our responsibility to make sure it's a safe environment for all involved in our school district. Clearly, it became an issue when some of these chants that were said at the event were said, and it was obviously and understandably very offensive to some people. And so I just want to recognize that and let people know that we hear that. I want to let people know that as a result of this, we are working to address those issues, not only for those who have participated as it relates to following the student code of conduct, which we expect every student to abide by in our school system, but also a potential learning opportunity for all of us as it relates to how damaging words and certain things, certain comments can be. Certainly internally, we need to also review what we as a district can do with our own practices as it relates to how we address disruptions of school and look at what guidelines we have in place to see if there's a way to address any concerns that arise quicker. And so, certainly, based on the feedback that we've received, we are understanding that people are upset, and they have been very helpful in regards to identifying their specific and exact concerns. I do want to at least finish by reporting today that school went well today. We actually had 200 IB World Religious students that attended a planned activity, a temporal Israel, that reported back to me, went with the principal, reported back to me, went extremely well. And, you know, this is just an example of the wonderful things that happen in our schools every day, and our focus is to get back to that environment ASAP. And so, again, appreciate everybody that's contacted us, that has reached out to us, and appreciate their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Lipia. Moving on to item number 5, public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue, and in the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides the Board may place limits, a time allotments for any individual comment. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the Board of Education at any time. Any comments that contain profanity, threats, or defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the roles and/or responsibilities for which they employ or serve is otherwise exempt from the First Amendment protection and will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking today on behalf of a group or organization, please identify who you represent. Today you will have allotment time of three minutes. Trustee Hill, will you be able to take the time today?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar, will you be assisting with the public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, first speaker is Adriana Nikagosian.
My name is Adriana Nikagosian, and I am representing the Bionic Blackhawks, our Bloomfield Hills High School robotics team. So to start tonight, I wanted to highlight the achievements that our team has had in the past year, as well as what we've been doing to sustain the program in our district. So to start, our team attended our two district events last year where we were able to advance to the state level and then the world's level as we typically do. And while we're at the world's championship, we have the responsibility of representing our district as being a Hall of Fame team. So with this responsibility comes the need for us to be able to adequately support that here in our buildings and here in our actual, like, team meeting zones. So basically, the way that our team works, every student on it has to mentor a younger student in the levels and has to mentor younger teams. And this is how we sustain the full progression through the first program in this district. So we have three levels. There's the First Lego League Challenge and the First Lego League Explorer. Those are both elementary. And then in middle school, you have First Tech Challenge, which is with metal and hand tools. It's kind of a smaller version of what our team does with our robots. So we wanted to talk about it tonight because it's been, like, we've grown so much in the past few years that we need to be able to have adequate, like, space to be able to contain the teams and also, you know, keep growing. So we just kind of wanted to point out, like, how much we have progressed in the past couple of years. We've also host events for these levels, so we've got the competitions for the middle school and elementary school levels, as well as competitions for high school. On, in November 4th, we're having our girls competition, which I've sent an email to everybody on the board, and we would love to see any attendance. We'd love to give you a tour and talk more about our First Robotics program, and you can also meet some of these younger students, as well as more people on our team and 32 other teams that are attending. Thank you for your time, and thanks for everything that you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is John Cobb.
Hello, my name is John, and I'm a junior at Bloomfield Hills High School, and like Adriana, I'm part of the First Robotics Team 2034, the Bionic Blackhawks. I've been involved in First in our district since about second grade, and I've been through all levels of the program. On the high school team, I'm part of our media team, where we spread awareness about our team's achievements, and our sustainability team, where we participate in various advocacy events, like the National and Michigan Advocacy Conferences. At these events, we learn how to advocate for funding for STEM education programs, and we also speak to our elected officials in DC and Lansing about the importance of programs like First and to advocate for STEM funding to ensure more students have access to these programs. Over the past few years, First Robotics programs have been growing in our district, which shows that more kids are getting involved in important STEM activities. After a few years of slow growth during the pandemic, more and more students are joining our district's First teams in all levels. For example, last year, our district had 46 members on our high school team, five FTC teams, 20 teams, and FLL Explore and Challenge. This year, we have 55 students on our teams, nine FTC teams, and 13 FLL teams, actually 26 FLL teams, 13 in both divisions. This growth is important for our district because it provides students with more STEM learning and leadership opportunities outside of schools. First programs have been proven to develop work-life skills in students such as self-confidence, teamwork, and problem solving. Students participating in First are also more likely to be interested in doing well in school and going to college. Having First programs in our district is impactful, as student involvement in these programs gains real-world, hands-on experience. Many of our team's alumni move on to be successful in their life after high school, becoming leaders in STEM-related fields. It is important, we continue to make robotics and STEM clubs accessible to all students in this district, and for this to happen, we need to maintain the level of involvement of our coaches and mentors and the support our district is giving us. We're looking forward to working with the board and administration to help make this program more successful in our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Hope I'm pronouncing this right. Next speaker is Garrett Hartung.
Hi, I'm Garrett Hartung. This is the first time that I attended one of these meetings, and earlier this year, I read in one of the papers that not every student is able to read and has the necessary math skills required or that are standard for the eighth grade, and then, you know, as you go, and the next one down is fourth grade. And I was wondering what happens to those students when they go to the next grade up? Do they get any special attention? Do they get any additional instructions? What happens? That was my basic question. I didn't have a comment, I just had a question.
Happy, happy to have Mr. Vidlac and someone from any of our LST staff actually spend some time with you and go over what happens specifically for those students.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Caymans.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Erk and Caymans. Most of you know me, been here plenty of times. I do want to thank you for acknowledging the protest yesterday and how poorly it went. I'm not prepared to speak today, but I truly could have pulled up any one of my speeches that I had prepared in front of this board, because they all pertain to hatred at Bloomfield Hills High School and how nothing is done about it. Whether it was the anti-mask, where parents were erroneously thrown through the mud and you did nothing about it, whether it was about the speaker that spoke at the school for four, for all four groups, pretty much denouncing the hatred for the Jewish people, and nothing was done about it. You knew there was going to be a rally yesterday. Everyone was aware of it, that there was going to be a rally. And not only did you allow it to happen, it happened on school premises. It happened at the entrance, at the main entrance of the school. I commend you for having all of the police there, because I was there, and there were tons of police. There were more police there than there was for the Blue Point alarm. But why? Because you were scared of the violence that could have happened because of that rally. If I were to come to you right now and swear and scream profanities, you would kick me out. You did nothing yesterday when they were chanting "Death to the Jews." Nothing. You let it go on. When they were saying 2468, Israel is a terrorist state, you did nothing but sit there and let them speak on a megaphone nonetheless. I am unprepared, but I will tell you the one thing I did pull up. It's your student code of conduct. You all know it, you all have it, your students should know it, their parents should know it. So let's get with a little of the verbiage with bullying. It means verbal or physical act, or any electronic communication, including but not limited to cyberbullying.
Excuse me, we do have time limits, so we're going to ask that you, we thank you for your comments.
I'm asking that something be done before this continues to go on. I'm asking that you actually are proactive in stopping the hatred and discrimination that is not new to Bloomfield Hills. What is it going to take? Something to come after you and your family? A lawsuit to the school? It's pretty simple-
Thank you.
-what they were doing yesterday, and it's pretty simple what the repercussions should be. They should all be expelled.
We thank you for your comments. Next.
Rich Zena.
We just want to be mindful, if we can, please. You see a lot of time. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Rich Zekman. I do not represent any group, except for my family, my wife, Esther. We have a sophomore who's at the school right now, we have someone who just graduated a year ago, and we have one who's coming up in the school, in the high school in the next two years. We have family in Israel, we have a niece in the IDF. We are shocked that the chanting that happened at the rally yesterday allowed to happen during school hours on school property. It was very insulting, it was very insensitive to your Jewish kids. And it shouldn't have happened. And I would like to know what the school board is going to do to prevent it from happening again. What lessons did you learn from last year? It's not right. It shouldn't happen in the schools. These rallies lead to violence, not just the emotional damage that happens to our children and our families, not to mention all the Israelis and all the Jews that are mourning the death of the worst terrorist attack on Israel's soil just two weeks ago. This is ridiculous. So that's my comment, and I would really like to know what lessons the Board has learned from last year, what's going to be implemented to prevent hate speech at our high school. This is the second year in a row. It's not okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dana Levy.
Good evening. I don't represent an organization, just myself and my family. And I may get emotional because of the topics of, that were chanted about yesterday, and the events globally for the last three and a half weeks are extremely painful, and not just to the Jewish population, but really to the entire world. I'm going to read a bit of a lengthy email that I wrote yesterday to the superintendent, as well as to the principal, who I'm not sure if he has, I believe he's not here in participation tonight. "My family and I are heartbroken for the last three weeks since the terrorist acts on Israel. The accounts of the murders, kidnappings, burnings, and rapes of infants, toddlers, children of all ages, the elderly women and men are outside of human nature. Only monsters could execute this. So now the connection to how these heinous acts abroad connect to us locally. The crimes do not affect those abroad only, they affect the entire Jewish diaspora. The drastic increase of antisemitism since these attacks and Israel's response to defend itself and hold accountable the terrorist monsters that caused the unimaginable pain is also a monstrosity. The words that have followed since are monstrosity. It has been both physically violent and violently verbal, spread locally, nationally, internationally, and should be feared by all regardless of religion and nationality. This hatred toward Jews, which dates back thousands of years, is not only a danger to the Jewish population, it is a critical danger to all of democracy. The trickle-down of terrifying hate and extreme misinformation about the facts and realities of the terrorist acts of October 7th, which incited the current war and the current spread of violent words, and the facts and realities of the history of the region are of grave concern, and they trickle down to our children that we teach today. The greatest layer of concern, of course, lies with those young people. They are impressionable, they're overly saturated with media and social media, and often do not use all of the facts as their fuel. This is where our responsibility begins. Yesterday, students participated in a walkout. If the intention was to chant for peace, for all people to be freed of terrorism, both Israeli and Palestinian alike, and for the 200-plus hostages that are currently held by terrorists abroad, I would applaud those chanting. However, it wasn't. The teens that walked out of BHHS chanted "Palestine will be free from the river to the sea." These are not just offensive words, these are dangerous, dangerous words. Many children don't even understand what they mean. The phrase that has been coined and repeatedly used by terrorist organizations and refers to the ethnic cleansing of Jews, the killing and eradication of Jews. The trick is that the phrase sounds quite innocent and poetic if one doesn't know the history. However, when Hamas and ISIS have chanted it themselves, it doesn't matter of any other association. The phrase "a narrative" is a danger. What happened yesterday to our students, to our parents, to the businesses, to the students inside, outside, is a danger. Community members heard, neighbors heard, businesses heard, and most importantly, the Jewish students who were inside their classes, where all students belong, they heard. The hatred spilled on Bloomfield Hills property yesterday. We are shaken as a family. I urge students and staff to get further educated on the conflict in the Middle East region as much as possible.
That's three minutes.
I urge everyone to focus on the facts, and we all need to build our context so that we can build toward peace and unity in our high school, rather than the divide that yesterday caused. This is a repeat of last spring's events, and change needs to happen now.
Next speaker is Stacy Fox.
Hi again. It's unfortunate to have to do this another time. Before I begin, I do want to give a shout-out to robotics. Those kids were amazing. It's an amazing program that is a pride and a spotlight for our district, and it is completely parent-run, so shout-out to them. And speaking of a spotlight, and I would like to say that in March, you guys let go for the Muslim and the Jewish communities, the time limit, because you thought it was an important conversation. So it's noted-
No, we didn't.
...that there's a time limit this evening.
There's always a time limit, just so you know, and it was indicated there was not- We had a time limit in March.
Just letting you know, so I hope this isn't counting against it. But speaking of a spotlight on our district, which the robotics team is, our district is so fortunate to have so much diversity. I have gone through all of the GET training, I have been part of many community events that needed the GET, the GET team that was there, the global training. When you knew that there was going to be a walkout, what a great opportunity. Maybe get the Jewish Student Alliance, maybe get something else, have them do it together. Like the previous person said, let them chant for peace for all the innocent lives that have been lost. Let them say they do want freedom in the region, freedom from terrorism, freedom from Hamas, both sides. That was a ball that was dropped. Our school has such a unique position, we could be a spotlight to the nation. And by the way, I've been saying this for 10 years, since I started GET training when my daughter was, my oldest one was in third grade. It's amazing that we still have to talk here and say, you know, be proactive, be brave, is what I said back in March. Do something, say something. And I also learned today that the Jewish students were reached out and brought out of their learning to their counselors to make sure that they felt safe. So I know you appreciate that learning is important, but pulling the Jewish kids out of their classes to make sure that they felt safe and that they needed support, the fact that you had to do that means that there was a problem. There shouldn't be these protests on campus. And although the kids maybe didn't have intent with their words, their words have a consequence. And maybe that's something we need to teach them. I think an unexcused absence as the consequence may not have gone far enough, that is not obviously up to me to decide, but something to look at. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amy Burman.
I had full intentions of coming tonight and just in support of some of my friends from the community who were speaking. I already emailed the Board. I did receive a response from the principal, a quick response from the superintendent, thank you. But I could not come without speaking, and I wanted you to see my face and know who I am. I emailed you last night stating that my children, my four children in the Bloomfield Hills district, are the great-grandchildren of four Holocaust survivors. One of them is still alive, the others are not. Most of our family was killed. We, my husband Jared and I chose this district very carefully and literally spent hours upon hours deciding where we were going to plant our roots and send our children. Where would our Jewish children be safe, feel comfortable, and welcome? I am not so sure that we made the right decision in living in Bloomfield Hills, and I am so distraught and upset that this is the second time in two years that my people have to come before you. My son Ben was afraid yesterday. He's a sophomore, he had a test to take. That's fine. Today, no one checked on him. I dropped him off there with every worry in my heart about what was going to happen, and the chanting still went on. I wish you would have stepped up and stopped it and intervened. I appreciate your time and your listening and the concern on your faces, but really, my community needs something to be done, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brenton Bylow.
Hi.
Hi, Brenton.
Going to change this up just a little bit, going to head over to PTIA. I'm the PTIA president, so over at IA. So I'm here in front of you today because the NITR ratings came out. Did you guys see them? We're ranked number two. Is that good or bad? What do you guys think?
I think it's pretty good.
For us, it's bad. You know why? Because we've been number one forever. Okay? Now, second guess, why are we ranked number two? Because we've got a C minus in facilities. And as much as I've been standing up here for three years, I think I'm going on now, we need your help. So we're over at IA, we're, we're doing our best, we're getting our sponsors in to help us out, but we need your help, and I know you guys can do it, because I saw a big budget come through for the rest of the schools. I'm kind of hoping at some point, there's just a little piece for IA, just to spruce up the facilities, help the parking lot, get four or five more classrooms, a couple of, at least areas where kids can sit and hold little conferences, you know, with a nice TV or something, you know, like, like a normal school would have in a library. So right now, I mean, it's an old elementary school. And when I say it's an old elementary school, it's old for any of the elementary schools. I mean, it's by far probably the oldest school in your district. And this is your second high school, but I'm just telling you, for us, a number-two ranking in the state, everybody says, oh, that's the greatest, greatest thing ever, you guys are number-two in the state. No, not when we've been number-one for 15 years. And, and why is that? It's because of facilities. So we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Klein.
Hello. My name is Jason Klein. Unlike some other folks here, this is my first time speaking in front of you, so this is a new face, so hello, and I'm going to smile at you. I wanted to take a little different tact here. I am speaking in regards to the rally that occurred yesterday. First, I want to thank you for volunteering here in your positions, right? You have a very hard job ahead of you, a very difficult time ahead of you, and it's not going to get easier, right? What happened yesterday, and the escalation yesterday, is a direct result of what happened last year, right? Folks feel as though they can pretty much do whatever they want here in this district, and it's really sad. As we talk to other folks in other districts here locally, right, they're, what happened? What's going on in Bloomfield, right? I grew up in this area, this district was always considered to be one of the best. And now, it's kind of like a laughingstock, like, what is happening, right? Again, I don't envy your position, it's going to be a very challenging time, I believe you guys have good intentions, it's a lot of hard work, but something needs to be done. And I'm sure that everybody here agrees, not going to be easy, you're going to anger people on both sides, but you got to find common ground. You got to make it so that it's a fair and equitable place for everybody, where everybody feels safe. You say all the right things, right? Everybody here says the right things. But what's happening actually in the school is the opposite of what you're saying. So again, I, I would, I would love to eventually hear what the action is going to be from the district. I don't believe you know just yet, but it's going to, it's going to take some serious efforts to rein in, really, the disaster that took place yesterday. So with that, I'm going to just say, I appreciate what you're going to do from here on. I have faith, we have faith, despite what has transpired thus far, that you guys are going to clean this up, right? And again, it's not an easy job, and I look forward to a better result, so we can come back here and we can thank you, and we can applaud all the work that you are going to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bobby Miller.
I really wasn't planning, my name's Bobby Miller, I'm resident of the district, I have been for 43 years. I really hadn't planned on speaking. I really am just going to echo what Jason Klein just said, basically. I have two grown sons who graduated from Andover a while ago. At the time, Andover was one of the top, if not the top, school in the, in the state. It is no longer in the top 10. I am a real estate broker, I have been for 40 years. For many, many years, people would say to me, I want the Bloomfield Hills School District. Unfortunately, now, they say, any school district but Bloomfield Hills. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. You've taken the best school district in the state, and I'm sorry, you don't want to hear it, but as a resident, it's very upsetting what has happened to the school and the district. And I, I, you, you made wonderful note, you know, about yesterday, but I didn't hear anything specific on what's going to be done. You're not answering.
We're not going to respond tonight.
I'm sorry?
We're not going to respond tonight.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you.
Is that the last public comment? Rebecca? Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm trying to understand this. Jory Chasman? Sorry, apologize.
Good evening. So, yeah, I'm Jory Chernut. So I'll be fairly brief, but let's go back a few years ago, and the horrible racist actions of the police officer in Minneapolis who killed George Floyd. Suppose the next day, there were protests supporting the actions of that despicable person on school grounds. What would have happened? I don't think it would have been the same as what happened yesterday. You had, even though we all know this, I'll repeat it, children that were beheaded, there were no notices of, hey, we're coming across, that killed 1,300 innocent people. So I think protests that happened yesterday, again, I feel like there's a bit of hypocrisy in terms of the actions, because that would have never happened a couple of years ago after a similar horrible, horrible situation. What am I asking? I guess what anyone would probably ask, moral courage, leadership, to educate, educate our students what's right, what's wrong, if necessary, accountability. So there's a lot of ignorance in the world, and I think it starts in the four walls of-
So I'll be fairly brief, but let's go back a few years ago, and the horrible racist actions of the police officer in Minneapolis who killed George Floyd. Suppose the next day, there were protests supporting the actions of that despicable person on school grounds. What would have happened? I don't think it would have been the same as what happened yesterday. Even though we all know this, I'll repeat it, children that were beheaded. There were no notices of, hey, we're coming across to kill 1,300 innocent people. So I think protests that happened yesterday, again, I feel like there's a bit of hypocrisy in terms of the actions, because that would have never happened a couple of years ago after a similar horrible, horrible situation. What am I asking? I guess what anyone would probably ask, moral courage, leadership, to educate, educate our students what's right, what's wrong, if necessary, accountability. So there's a lot of ignorance in the world, and I think it starts in the four walls of the home, as well as the confines of the school. So I'm just asking you all for leadership and moral courage to speak out for what's right, because I think it's pretty black and white. Thanks.
No more public comment.
Thank you for your public comment today. We're going to move on to item number six. Board President Report. If we can shift to the Pine Lake update. Karen, if you can please come forward.
which took place on October 11th. Bloomfield Hills Schools has made the preservation of our lands for public use a top priority through a 20-year partnership. We still maintain ownership of the land in order to preserve our ability to grow as a district. We want our families to be able to use our spaces for physical activity, community building, and to continue to harness the importance of green space for our families. We're looking forward to seeing this space transformed beginning next year. This will be a process of about three to five years on behalf of the township. Together with our West Bloomfield Parks partners, Trustee Falal declared the space of Pine Lake Park at the dedication ceremony a couple of weeks ago. Here are a couple of photos from that event. And then here, it is a little bit difficult to see, but is a planned, current plan from West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation around what they're planning on doing there. So it does include additional parking and some additional park space. They're exploring the idea of having improved tennis courts and pickleball courts. They're looking into doing a trail system there. So there's a lot of exciting things coming. They have committed to working with the community and working with us to ensure that we offer opportunities for additional community feedback. There has been significant opportunity for that leading up to this partnership agreement, and both the district and the park system is very excited to be able to use what used to be Pine Lake Elementary for the next 20 years as this additional green space in the community.
Thank you so much, Karen. Trustee Falal, did you want to add anything about that wonderful experience? Thank you so much for representing our Board of Education and providing an amazing speech. So did you want to add anything?
No, it was, I think the best part of it was seeing residents who had been in the area for a long time, and maybe who had been there years ago, or, you know, like, they've looked at it and wondered what's happening, what's happening, and they finally come, and they saw the map with all the exciting things. So my kids were there, and they saw the map, and pickleball, and all these cool things coming. So great partnership, great opportunity. I think it was a super logical way to use that space, so we're excited for it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Karen, for providing us with an update of how that event went. Does anyone else have any comments? Moving on to item number seven, consent agenda. Trustee Van Gimmeren.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 28, 2023. Approval of the minutes from the study session of October 12, 2023. Request to approve dispersment reports as presented by Carmela Lewis. I guess I did that backwards. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented by Carmela Lewis. Move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented by Deanna Wheeler, Director of Finance. I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to collect summer property taxes on property located within the school district as presented by Dr. Randy Leepa, Interim Superintendent. And I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented by Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Second. There is a motion that's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I just had one question about one of the items.
Yes. Which item number? Letter?
One of the dispersments. And since we had a very long group of pages on the dispersments, I can just tell you, it is, I'm not sure what, oh, page seven.
Which letter?
The check register for board reporting.
You're talking about D on the agenda.
Letter D?
Request for dispersment reports.
Well, I guess, just, I was requesting whether we could take one line item out of our dispersments and maybe use a different fund, and I think I requested more information about this one line item. It's just the food service equipment that was paid out of the bond fund. And I know we have a huge excess of food service equipment funds we can use that has to be paid down. It's by law that, you know, our food service funds have to be used. So I was just wondering if we could just pay for that using those funds, so we can take some bond money and put it back into our funds somehow. I don't know how that works, but...
Yeah, I think what we can do is approve the dispersment tonight so that the payment can be made, but then we can move the account number.
Okay.
After we, and we just about finalized looking into the details of that for you, because there are some other actual line items that we've identified that potentially we could move also to do the same thing. And it's a nice opportunity for us, if we can save a few dollars on the bond issue, and then move them over to the food service fund, which we know we have to spend down. So just as Trustee Noble is describing, I think it's a good suggestion. We haven't quite finalized the details, because we think we found a few more like that that we could do. But you can prove the dispersment tonight, and we can move the money at any time, budget revision, et cetera. Yep. So we'd be happy to do that. So no need to amend the agenda, if that's okay. But we definitely can follow up with the moving of the money from one fund to the other through our budget process.
So we're basically just approving the payment?
Correct. Yep. It's a good catch, though. Thank you.
Yeah. Just trying to help save some money and, you know, be fiscally responsible.
Absolutely.
What's the deadline for the, for those, for the food services?
They have a, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the spend-on deadline is, but I know that Mary Ann, who runs our food service program, has identified for us.
I don't have anything else. Other than, actually, I did notice one other thing. I know this is picky, but I noticed that the high school pays an energy bill that's $21,000 versus the second highest is $3,000 in energy costs. And I know that that energy use and sustainability is such a big issue now in our country and in public schools and every, anything, really, universities, companies, we're trying to be sustainable. So I'm just wondering if maybe in the future, we can look at how to lower that cost, because $21,000 is a lot to pay in energy every year.
And we can report back to the board on that, too, in a future update. We'll take a look at that $21,000 item. It may be two items combined in one month. What, we can get back and review that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Noble. Any other comments?
What was the line item? Previous one?
The direct energy business payment.
No, 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 with regard to the food service.
The first. Oh, okay. It is page seven, and it says, it's to Barton Mallow, and it's only $7,267, but it's to pay for food service equipment. And that's one thing we can pay out of our food service budget. So I just figured, why not save some bond money? And I know it's only $7,000, but every dollar matters, honestly. So it's just trying to be helpful, and I noticed that, so.
I thought you had another, I thought you had a comment.
Trying to follow along here.
All right. So any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, six-zero. Moving right along, we have item number eight, which is special reports. We have joining us from our annual financial audit presentation, we had Donna and Casey.
And just a little lead-in, President Southward, we had a chance at the study session to actually dig in to some extent with the financial audit. Big picture, we're pretty much exactly where we thought we were going to be. Hats off to Karen Hildbrand, who prepared the budget, the final budget revision last year, and of course, did a remarkable job of helping us, even after she left, getting our financial audit prepared, along with a variety of staff in our business office, Lori Hartnell, Becky Geske, Maria Gistinger, all pitched in to get the audit done this year. And we're pleased to report that we're pretty much where we thought we were going to be and onward and upward. So Donna, you're in.
Thank you. And thank you to the Board of Education for having us here tonight on the agenda. As Dr. Leepa said, we discussed the draft financial statements two weeks ago in the study session. Nothing has changed since we covered those documents at that time. I did also want to thank Deanna Wheeler and also Carmela Lewis, the business office, stepping into the middle of an audit and picking up and being able to run with things and answer our questions and get us the needed documentation was quite a feat the first week you're starting your position. So really acknowledge their hard work. We'll talk about the results of the audit. As auditors for the district, we have a responsibility to render an opinion on the district's financial statements, which are prepared by management. I'm happy to report that we have rendered an unmodified opinion. This is the highest form of assurance that we can provide, that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, are fairly presented within the accounting guidelines, and can be relied upon for the basic audit. And we've also issued an unmodified opinion on the federal programs audit. There were two major programs that were tested this year, the Child Nutrition Cluster and the IDEA Program. We have no findings or question costs related to the work performed. In addition, of course, to the numbers that are audited with the federal grant dollars, there's also compliance with those grant program contracts. No findings and question costs there. So that's great news. Also wanted to note that with the bond and sinking fund expenditures that the district incurs, there is also compliance requirements related to the allowability and the processes and procedures of how bid testing is done or how bidding is done. That is something we also look at and include that in the district's financial statements. We also ensure that the expenditures are in accordance with the ballot language of when those bond issues were approved by the voters. One item to note, that is a highlight, I think, of the year for all districts in the state that we bring to your attention, is an additional item. It's a new item in fiscal '23, and it is a one-time item, and that's related to the additional amount of retirement funding that the district received. So this is reflected in the district's financial statements as revenue, is approximately $6 million this year, revenue, and then the district is required to pay that into the retirement system. So it's an in and an out, and it is, again, reflected in the revenue and expenditure. So there's a bump in the revenue and expenditures this year due to this one-time item. And then finally, I would like to congratulate the district on being awarded the 2022 Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials. The district does prepare a very comprehensive financial statement with a lot of information, a lot of statistical information about the community as well in the back of the report that is submitted for recognition for this award, and you were granted that award for 2022. That actual certificate is included in the financial statement. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, business office.
Great job to our district. Karen, thank you.
This graph is a snapshot of the, in a recap, of the pandemic grant support that the district has received, all the various grants since 2020. And there was three rounds of legislation that established these grants. And the total amount awarded over the period of time was $11.9 million expended to date. So this would be expenditures through June 30, 2023, is $10.7 million. So there's approximately $1.2 million that is required to be spent through, you have until September of 2024, where, and so it's in the wind-down period of expending these grant dollars. And just a reminder, I know you hear this often, that this is one-time money. It's supported, it has supported many expenditures of the district the past few years, and that will wind down, and it's not recurring. So all those costs and things that those dollars were funding, which may still be in occurrence after these dollars wind down, will not have this additional support paying for them. So that's something that I know the district is focused on in ensuring that you're addressing in the budgeting and going forward, so that your cost structure going forward is exclusive of these dollars and planning carefully. I'm going to turn it over to Casey, who is going to focus on the general fund.
Thank you, Donna. So I'm just going to quickly highlight some high-level financial information on the general fund's activity for the year ended June 30, 2023. Quick disclaimer, us auditors are always looking at historical info. We're working one year behind, so if I say current year, I'm really talking about the year ended June 30, 2023, not the current fiscal year that you're in, and prior year would be June 30, 2022. With that disclaimer, we can go ahead and look at the general fund's revenue and other sources. Total revenue for the general fund this year came in at $114.2 million, which is an increase of around $12.9 million from fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. If we take a look at this pie chart, we can sort of go clockwise around, first being local revenue coming in at $38.8 million. It makes up approximately 34% of the general fund's revenue, and the vast majority of what's in that local revenue bucket is your property tax revenue. And that really remained consistent with what we saw in 2022, so $32.9 million in '23 compared to $32.8 million in 2022. Moving ahead to state source revenue, so this is the biggest bucket, making up over half of the general fund's revenue. Included in here is the state's portion of the foundation allowance, which is the per pupil funding, as well as categoricals. You did see a significant increase in your per pupil foundation allowance between fiscal year '22 and '23. The baseline average for the base foundation across the state was a $450 increase, and what that translated to, to Bloomfield Hills, was actually $468. And that's compared to about $151 that you saw between '21 and '22. So a significant increase in your per pupil foundation allowance this year, as well as the additional one-time funding that Donna mentioned for the state retirement system. So an additional $6 million that, as she mentioned, it's flow-through, so it comes in, you report it as your revenue, it grosses that up, and you'll also see the gross-up on the expenditure side.
Did you say $451 to $462?
For the foundation allowance. It was a $468 increase from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23.
Wow.
Which, it's at $12,985 is where it was for June 30, 2023.
Thank you.
Moving to inter-district transfers and others, so in transfers in, this is primarily made up of your Act 18 payments and the Medicaid distributions you receive from Oakland schools. That's over 90% of what's in that bucket. And lastly, is your federal source revenue. So we did see an increase in federal source revenue this year, just based on the amount of ESAR funding that you received and what you were able to recognize as revenue this year. So there was about $2 million increase overall in your federal revenue between fiscal year '22 to '23. Flipping ahead to look at the flip side, looking at expenditures and other uses, so we're going to look at expenditures two different ways. This first slide is classifying it by the function code in the accounting structure. This first slide is classifying it by the function code in the accounting structure, or you can kind of look at this as departmental level, like where is the district spending the money? Total expenditures for the year ended June 30th, 2023 came in at $112.7 million, which is an increase of $9.1 million from last year. And again, $6 million of that is related to the expenditure side of the pass-through retirement funding. As expected, as a school district, the majority of your expenditures are sitting in that instruction, instruction support, and pupil services bucket. 72.5% of expenditures are in that bucket. And that's compared to 73% for 2022, so a half, a half a percentage decrease. Despite that, though, dollar-wise, it was up $6.2 million additional funding in those categories. All the remaining departmental expenditures are in alignment with prior year. There was no significant changes to what we saw in those buckets. Flipping ahead to the next slide, this is taking a look at those same expenditures that we just looked at, and instead classifying them by the object code in their account structure, or you can think of it as how the district's spending the money in the departments that we just looked at. As to be expected, the vast majority of this is spent on salaries and employee benefits. In total, for both groupings, make up 83.7%, and that's compared to 83.3% for fiscal year 2022, so a slight increase there. The retirement funding pass-through that we keep talking about, the employee benefits bucket, that's where it's getting recorded, so it's sitting in that bucket. And that's inclusive of your normal recurring 147(c) pass-through and the one-time funding. And just for reference, total pass-through in fiscal year '22 was $7.8 million, compared to 16.3 in total with the recurring amount in fiscal year '23. So an increase of around $8.5 million. So what does this mean for the general fund and the fund balance? So this slide is looking at the change in fund balance due to the revenue and expenditures that we just talked about, resulting in an approximately $1.5 million increase in fund balance for, at June 30th, 2023. The board had adopted a final budget with a planned increase of $1.5 million. So the general fund is right where you thought it would be at June 30th. This slide also breaks out the individual components of fund balance. So your total fund balance at June 30th came in at $21.6 million. And it's broken down into these categories. So non-spendable would be equal to any inventory amounts or prepaid items on the general fund's balance sheet at June 30th. And that's just representative amounts that are considered already paid and not available to be spent. The assigned fund balance represents what you had planned to use, your planned use of fund balance per your adopted fiscal year 2024, the real current year budget, showing a moderate, well, more like a light usage of fund balance in the upcoming year, with the remaining of that sitting in your assigned, unassigned fund balance. One last slide to look at, and this is looking at that retirement funding and the MIPSers expense. So this slide is illustrating the increase that has been seen over time and what a significant expense this is to the district. The funding provided from the state does help, but there's still an increasing trend in the retirement rate, which is expected to continue for at least the next few years. You'll also see in this graph that 2023 is going to be a bit of an outlier year due to that one-time funding, and that high piece is due to the $6 million that's included in there that was that additional one-time payment.
Does that go back down next year?
Yes, yep, that will go back down with the removal of that one-time piece. And this graph has a nice piece at the bottom that shows both the gross amount of your expense and the net amount of how much that funding pass-through helps. But it's still a pretty big number. With that, I'm going to pass it back to Donna for some closing comments.
Thank you. So just to recap, positive audit results, congratulations. I wanted to speak just briefly about the fact that the business office has been through, working through transition. Had some longtime employees and now some new employees in place. We continue to appreciate the fact that planning for the transitions, you know, really prioritize the internal controls and processes and procedures and adhering to those and accommodating and ensuring there's coverage during the time where there might have been gaps in personnel in the business office. So appreciate that fact, it is a priority. And we're excited to work with the new team as well. And just as, also as a reminder, as I mentioned at the beginning, with the winding down of those emergency federal dollars, just continued focus on how those wind down, those expenditures that are paid for, ensuring they're not part of your normal cost structure that you need for recurring expenditures is always a great thing to do. The district has spent down, as you saw, the majority of these funds. And, you know, at the same time, as Casey had mentioned, yes, there has been increases in foundation allowance the past couple of years. All told, though, over the past 14 years, if you look at things collectively, still, you are behind what inflationary increases have been over that period of time. Labor costs continue to increase, just the general operations and how school districts do business. Those costs include, increase as well. So just prudent budgeting as we see from this district already and the systems you have in place, moving forward and projecting is a great tool. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you so much, Casey and Donna. Superintendent Leopold?
Yeah, I think that was a nice summary. Obviously, the big thing for us now is the first budget revision, and to really get a handle on where we're at moving forward. And so we're looking forward to the Fourth Friday audit being done very shortly here. We should know by the first week of November what our student count looks like for the year. That's a big, big piece, right, guys? That's a big piece of the...
Yes, it's one of the key pieces.
Of the puzzle, and then we're going to take a look at, we mentioned, I think, in the study session, we want to look very closely at our healthcare, because we had a big bump in our healthcare costs. Remember, we're self-insured for healthcare, and so that can vary from year to year. We saw a big bump last year, so we really want to see where we're at budget-wise for that, too. But having taken those two things into consideration, you know, hopefully we'll be having a positive report with that revision. So we've got a good plan, then moving into our planning for next year.
Great. Thank you. Trustees, any comments or questions? Thank you again.
Thank you for having us.
Have a great one.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item number nine, general discussion. LST?
Here we go. We have Carrie Cracker here, who is at her swan song. This is it, gang. This is our last chance to not only hear a lot of information about our assessment data that we've received, but also our last chance to grill Carrie in regards to all the numbers that she's going to share with us tonight. I just want to take a second to publicly congratulate Carrie on her new, her new position. She's now an Assistant Superintendent in centerline. That's a big job. We're not surprised that someone would swallow up Carrie for such an important position. We're proud of her, and we're also going to miss her greatly. So Carrie, you're on for your final, your final presentation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what was on the board packet.
Congratulations.
This is not the right draft.
I think we're good. Okay, all right, we'll make it work. Yes, thank you so much, and thank you again for having me, Board President, Dr. Southward, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Leopold. So, yep, as you heard, I'm here to share our spring state assessment results from the spring of 2023, and just give you a nice overview of how we did, right? And all we can do is move forward from there, so...
And just highlight for the audience, again, we really dug into this last week at our study session and had a chance to really have some conversation around this. So tonight, we have an opportunity to overview sort of what we talked about last, last meeting.
Yep. So this slide really just represents, to show you by grade level, all the assessments that students have to take across a given year. So again, this is just state assessments, and again, it just shows you by grade what specific things our students have to take for a state assessment. And then what you're about to see is really, we're just going to examine our state assessment results. At first glance, we're going to take a look at our elementary and middle schools with M-Step, and then we'll jump into our middle school or eighth grade PSAT. So we will start there. This I created just to show you, you know, you always kind of wonder, you know, are you doing equally as well in language arts as you are in math? That's always a question. And so we can see from here that our, in third and fourth grade, math is actually, our students are performing a little bit better in math than they are in ELA, even though they're almost equally as high, but you can see math is a little bit better. In fifth grade, we can see our students did better in ELA versus math. Sixth grade and seventh grade, we can see they're almost about the same. We're doing equally as well in literacy and math. And then in eighth grade, we see a significant jump in our PSAT 8, where students were really doing phenomenally well with English Language Arts versus math. So just something to look at, and something that we share with our principals as well, like how are we doing in those subjects, and how do they compare as they impact the other content areas? Especially when you look at math, we're also looking at how our students are doing science. And then ELA, we're also typically looking at how are our students doing in social studies since they impact one another. This slide really just represents, so the purple is really, of course, because we're the Blackhawks, right? So I have to do purple. But really, just to show you that in English Language Arts, which is that first set of bar graphs that you see, we are outperforming the state and the county by a significant amount across our district. Then the next set of bar graphs you see is math, third through eighth grade. So you're seeing M-Step and PSAT here, and then science and social studies. You can see in every single content area, in every single grade, we are outperforming the state and the county. And then just those reminders, too, that the state index target, they set those. It expires in 2024, but they're expecting everybody in the state to be at least at 60% proficiency with English Language Arts, and then 47.55% proficiency in mathematics. And so we are above those cut marks in all of our subject areas. Obviously, this is something to be proud of. So just to show you, how is Bloomfield doing? So this is just M-Step, right? So it took PSAT out. But just to show you that for English Language Arts, we are second in the county compared to the other top districts in our county. So we are ranked second behind Birmingham by like 1%. This really just shows you the trend over time. So kind of going back historically to look at, Bloomfield is that solid line going across that trend line. And then the other, the top five districts in the county, took the average of those top five districts to see how is Bloomfield comparing over time. And you can see where we were behind some of the other districts back in 1617. And over time, we've actually crisscrossed that line, and we're now outperforming many of the top districts in the county when we look at the averages. And that's for M-Step, Language Arts. The other thing that we take a look at is, again, some of that historical data. This is where some of that trend information comes from, but you can see back in 1617, we were ranked sixth in the county, and we've now moved up to that, like, first second spot. We were first last year with ELA, this year we're second by, again, 1%. But you can see over time some of that historical data and how the other districts have done, and then how Bloomfield has ranked. We're going to switch over to math. And so in math, with just M-Step, we are second in the county this time by like, I don't know, again, a percentage point, so we're just behind Novi here, but we're second in the county. So very highly competitive here. Again, that same trend line, just like we saw for Language Arts. Again, this is just M-Step, so grades three through seven. We can see that in 1617, where we were just below the average of the five top districts in Oakland County, and how we've sort of crossed that line where we see some of the other districts dropping significantly, where we've been able to increase and maintain our district average and proficiency on M-Step math. And then, again, some of that same data, but you can see the actual numbers and the comparison across the county over time. And you can also see over time from 1617 to the spring of '23, where our ranking has come up over time as well. This, what we take a look at, again, we look at U.S. News and Niche Rankings as well. We try to look and see how are some of the top districts in the state doing, and not just Oakland County? Because we know we're towards the top in Oakland County, so how are we doing compared to the top districts across the state? We can see that this year for M-Step, ELA is on your left side and math is on the right. We are third in the county, in the state, behind Northville and East Grand Rapids. And then we are second in the state, just behind Northville. So that's how we compare to some other top districts in the state, just with M-Step. We're going to switch over to PSAT 8, so this is standalone data. It's just our eighth grade students. We can see that we are first in the county with M-Step. And the test is actually called Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, so it assesses reading and writing. And then that trend line, where we can see, again, where the solid line, and then how we compare in the county to the top five districts in the county. You can see that we've come out on top and have been able to maintain. And then the graph, again, that breaks down some of that data, where you can compare how we've done over time since 1617. And you can see where our ranking has come up, where we used to be fourth, and now the last two years, we've been first in the county with PSAT 8 Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. With mathematics, PSAT 8 only. Our district is third in the county with PSAT 8 math. And then that trend line, which you can see, we were sort of really comparable to many of the top districts in the county. The whole county, including us, took a little dip in 2021. We know that was our hybrid year. And then we came up, other districts went down, and then we're sort of coming even again. So that's something that we have to take a look at. And then, sorry, that went too fast. There's not a back arrow on this one, so... Sorry, apologize, it's jumping ahead of me. Usually there's a... There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Again, it just shows the trend data compared to those top districts in the county for the last several years, and it shows how our ranking has gone for each year, where last year we were first with math, this year we're third. There are some other districts that got just ahead of us. You can see Troy at 69, and then Novi with a whopping 78% proficiency in math with PSAT 8. And again, this is our comparison, so not just comparing us to Oakland County, where we're highly competitive, but also comparing us to the top districts across the state. Again, a lot of these top districts are pulled from the U.S. News and Niche Rankings as well. They're the groups that say that these are the top in the state. And so with PSAT 8, we're third with Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. And then we are third across the state, you know, just behind Northville and East Grand Rapids with mathematics. And then we're going to see some disaggregated data here. So we have just M-Step, ELA over to the left, and then we have just M-Step math over to the right. We can see that at least when we look at the disaggregated data by groups for the county, and then just comparing those groups to Bloomfield Hills, you can see that our student groups, even though they're not quite where we want them to be, but they are, we are outperforming other districts across the county. This is just the PSAT 8, and the reason why you don't see Bloomfield Hills for certain student groups is because the state has suppression rules for data because of FERPA, right? Because those students can become identifiable in the data, and that can't be made public. And so if we have less than 30 students in a group, we cannot publicly publish that data. We, as administrators, and that can look at it behind the scenes and talk about the students and make sure that the right plans or interventions are in place for students, but we can't report that data publicly. So that's why you only see Bloomfield Hills for certain student groups and not others. I wanted to make sure, you know, as we're sharing state assessment data, that you had a chance to look at our My Access data. So these are our students with IEPs that take an alternative assessment called My Access. There's three different types. This one is participation. It shows you how Bloomfield Hills is doing, we're in the yellow, how we're doing compared to the state and the county with students with IEPs. There is also supported independence. And if you don't see Bloomfield Hills data for a particular group, it's because, again, there's less than 30 students taking that assessment, and we can't publicly report out that data due to suppression rules. And then the last one is functional independence. So depending on what type of need a student has and what is in their IEP, we've actually worked a lot with Oakland schools to identify what would be the best appropriate assessment to give a child, whether they're verbal, non-verbal. And so the questions are differentiated within those tests to be appropriate for the students based on the needs and what's outlined in their IEP. This slide is just a reminder that for... This slide is just a reminder that for PSAT eight nine, for PSAT 10, and then for SAT, which is given at grade 11, to show you what the cut scores are for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing for each grade level and then the cut scores in math. And so kids that are considered at benchmark or proficient are above that, at or above that cut score when we're looking at the percent proficient with PSAT and SAT data. Keeps jumping on me. So... Sorry, I feel like it jumped way ahead. Apologize. So we're going to switch over to SAT. And so over to the left, what I highlighted for you is what was the state average for the SAT Evidence-Based Reading and Writing? What was the math average? And then what was the total composite score of both of those assessments for our kids that take SAT? That's the state average. And then how does Bloomfield Hills compare to those state averages? So you'll see our average student, the mean score on the SAT is 554 for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, 532 for math, and then a total composite score of 1,087. Then the graphs basically show that Bloomfield Hills is the like teal-blue bar graph and to show you that we are outperforming the county and the state when it comes to SAT. You can also see the historical data there because it shows you how we've done over time. Sort of nice to see those trend lines so that you can see if Bloomfield Hills is sort of trending with the county. To sort of question, was it just students across the county? Was there something with the test that year? And thinking about what might have impacted the students in a given year. So we can see that for the most part, even with math, that we've sort of followed that county trend line, which are the red squares, where when the county went up, we went up and when the county went down, we went down as well. And then this is the specific disaggregated data for SAT. Again, just that reminder, if we don't see data for certain student groups in Bloomfield Hills, it's because of those state suppression rules. But again, typically when we look and compare ourselves and how our student groups are doing across the county, we typically outperform them. And then the overall trend data with SAT for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, you can see that when we compare ourselves, which again is that solid line and the top five districts in Oakland County, which is the dotted line, we've pretty much, if you look over time, have been comparable to other districts, the top districts across the county and have been highly competitive with that. So this is Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. And then again, that trend over time, which are the actual numbers to show you how we've done since 201617. This year, we're actually tied with the three top districts in the county for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. Then again, the disaggregated data for math. Again, where our student groups are above the county, not necessarily where they need to be, but just above the county. And then that trend line with math, which you can see the solid line is Bloomfield Hills and the dotted line is the top five in the county. And so when we look at SAT, we have some work to do to get that trend line back up with the top in the county. And then these are the specific numbers that make up some of that data and you can see we've kind of trended the same over time, but still have a lot of work to do with our math. And then with SAT, how do we compare across the county? You can see this year, this past spring, we were third in the county, so we're just behind Birmingham and Novi with Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. And then we are sixth in the county with mathematics SAT. And then our comparison to those top districts in the state, so not just the county, you can see that we are fourth in Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, so we're just behind Ockhamos, East Grand Rapids and Northville with mathematics. Again, just like with the county, but this is the state level, we are sixth in mathematics compared to those top districts in the state. That's all I have for you tonight, just an overview of what we're seeing in the data. I would add that we had a core leadership MyKit meeting to present much of this data along with some more detailed disaggregated data with our administrators and teacher leaders so that we could pull out some salient points and some things that we want to focus on for this year.
Thank you so much, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Trustees, do you have any questions or comments? All right, I do. So new to the report, I don't remember if this was, I don't recall seeing this in the, and I could be remiss, but slides number 23 through 26. You went really fast, so I was, this is new to me. And so could you explain what this data really entails? Because I'm trying, I was trying to keep up with what you were saying and you went really fast.
Okay. Can you, because the, the slides aren't numbered in this particular lab chat.
Oh, sorry.
So which ones?
The 2023 Bloomfield Hills in My Access participation and then also the in My Access Supported Independence. And then the other one was the Functional Independence. Could you explain those particular data points and what they, what they mean?
Yes.
You went kind of fast for me.
So like participation, they're basically asking the students just some questions to participate in like a, sort of a testing environment, just to see if they can respond. And so a lot of times with participation, sometimes those are our nonverbal students or students with minimal language, oral language capabilities. And so they're asked to really participate.
Typically, students with IEPs?
Yes, students with IEPs, yes. So the, the assessment that's chosen, the My Access assessment, which is alternate to our M-Step, they are students with various needs within the IEP, right? So the resource room teachers, staff and hard of hearing teachers, anybody who works with the staff with a, or a student with an IEP picks which My Access assessment might be appropriate. And then we also work with Oakland schools to make sure the students are identified for the right assessment, for, for state, state assessments, because they all count for accountability purposes.
And then what's, what is the purpose of the state assessment and what are we looking to kind of help and find support? Like, could you help us in understanding? Because this, this is the first time that I'm remembering to ever see this.
So typically, in the last couple of years, we, we weren't able to get the data in time or it wasn't public, the My Access data wasn't publicly released in time for the September presentation. And it just happened to be that we're doing it in October this year, so I was able to have the data. In the past two years, I've actually presented it in February with the Benchmark Assessment. And I think both times I had Rebecca Anders here to help explain it.
Okay.
As well.
I trust you.
And just to kind of over, because she, we share this along with...
Yes.
Their bridge assessment that they give.
But this is the first time it's been infused in this for particular report.
Yes.
Thank you so much for that.
You got it. Absolutely.
So now I do know, I appreciate that. So thank you for, you don't have to continue the explanation.
Yeah, but again, the assessments vary by the level of student and the programming needs and things like that.
Yes. My lens has changed because now I remember at 100%. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I do have another question if no one else has. I just want to, and I was following you, and I just wanted to make sure that the year, that this is the correct year that I was reading. So, oop, my computer. So the slide that talks about the 2022 SAT math, this aggregated data, is that 2023?
Yes.
Okay, because the slide says 2020. No, go down one more.
Back, which way? This way?
Yes.
Sorry.
Is this 2023?
It is 2023.
Thank you.
That's a typo, I apologize for that.
No, you're fine. I, I think you said 2023. But I wanted to make sure that I was not losing my, my, my mind, so.
No, you are not. It's my error and I apologize, so we'll make sure that that gets fixed.
Public has been noted, so we, we know it's 2023.
All right.
Any, any other questions? You know, I love the data. So I have, we had a great conversation, I think, at our last meeting. And I do look forward to receiving the aggregated information for my other questions that I had from our study session. Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much, Carrie, and we, we do wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you for the well wishes. I appreciate everything you guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
So for the board business item number 10, I will read the item. We will have the presentation by the representative and then we'll make the motions. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
All right. So we'll move to item number A. Dr. Leapa?
Yes, this is just the acceptance of the annual financial report that you had the presentation tonight. So annually, you'll accept the report as presented.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, as audited or presented by Plant Moran.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Now we move to a discussion on the report that was provided. Any discussion, trustees? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Oh, any abstentions? Okay, perfect. Moving on to item number 10B. Jacob Durbit, we're talking about the request for the approval of food services truck purchase.
This is for the request to approve food service truck from LaFontaine Lansing. And this would be a 2023 Ram ProMaster for food service in the amount of $52,600. And this would be funded from the food service account.
Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of one 2023 Ram ProMaster for food services in the amount of $52,600 to be funded by the Food Service Fund.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, trustees?
This is excellent use of the funds. I'm very excited.
Mary Ann's very excited too. She's been waiting for this for about two years now, so this is a huge moment for everybody.
What does she use currently? Anything?
She uses one of our older vehicles that is currently in the shop quite a bit because it has some unreliable issues.
Any additional discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All of, motion carries six zero. Moving on to our next item, which is also Jake. A large, go ahead, mower.
I am asking the board to approve the purchase of two large rotary mowers. This would come from, it would be two Toro Groundmaster 4000D models in the amount of This would come from Spartan Distributors and is part of the cooperative purchasing program to be funded by the Capital Fund Equipment.
Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of two Toro Groundmaster 4000D models in the amount of $172,470.48 from Spartan Distributors to be funded by the Capital Equipment Fund.
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion, trustees?
We talked about them a couple of weeks ago. And the fact that we have a lot of land and this is how much they cost, so.
And we did look them up too.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it is pretty amazing, the cost increase of this stuff. And, you know, these are over 20 some years old and our department does a phenomenal job trying to take care of this stuff and prolong it as long as they can. But unfortunately, the can has not been able to been kicked down the road any, any further.
Who is our supplier for these items? Is, are there multiple suppliers or do we acquire a supplier?
Maybe just talk a little bit about the cooperative bid, how that works.
Yeah, so the cooperative bid is, is a lot, like, you know, like the, the truck purchases came off the My Deal and spoiler alert, what's coming next is the John Deere cooperative bid off of the My Deal. And pretty much, this is all, they are fully transparent, they show all the numbers to the state of Michigan and it's, it's a vetting process without doing an RFP. So the district does not have to go out to do an RFP because it's over the bid threshold of the state of Michigan. And it allows us to purchase equipment in a little bit quicker streamlined fashion.
And the great thing is they're vetting this at the state level, so they're actually making these recommendations for any school district in the state to use that. They're trying to get the best prices. So we're buying one truck, but you know, there may be 10 trucks being purchased over this, the fall across the state of Michigan, they can get lower prices and we can just tie into their, their bid process as opposed to doing it separately.
Yeah, and most school districts and municipalities, this is how they acquire fleet vehicles and stuff. They go through a already vetted out system. And it's amazing when you call any dealership and you speak with a fleet salesperson, just how, how much of a demand process they're in, because it's pretty, pretty, pretty busy, especially in today's market.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero. Next, we have item number 10D for our John Deere Gator.
So this is the purchase of two John Deere utility vehicles. One would be at the North Hill site and one would also be at the South Hill site. These John Deere Gators, we have them at the high school, we have them at the farm athletics. This is a request that they need for their, their program, but also we are selfish and we are going to use it and we're going to use our turf grooming equipment and, and use this gator to take care of our turf with it. And that's like a sweep. It's a, the turf groomer is like a big sweep that it's, it grooms it and sweeps the, the turf. And then we also have a magnet that picks up any kind of sharp objects and this is what the gator would be used for. So these two, we got very lucky, we got aggressive with the options and both gators come, come out to be $28,592 or $592.14. Individually, they're not near the bid threshold, but together it's, it just is a little cleaner process when we're doing all these vehicles. So that's why you see this presented to you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion, trustees?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of two 2024 John Deere Gator HPX615E models in the amount of $28,592.14 to be funded by the Capital Equipment Fund.
I second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our final agenda item, item number 10E. The final reading of the adoption of the board policy update.
We'll let Keith provide any details with that along with trustee Noble. I just would say that it seems like we've been talking about these policies for about five months now. I've only been here for three, but it feels like five months. And, but we, it's been a thorough process through two readings now already and, and a variety of vettings in your study sessions, so.
He covers everything that I would have just said, so. If you have any additional questions, we, we have covered these over a couple of different meetings. We had a first reading and second reading. Any questions that we had, we have gone back and asked Miller Johnson, our policy provider, and have been able to get back to you on those.
And just so you can, can you, never mind. Trustee Noble, did you want to add anything?
Um, no. It's good to go, in my opinion, but you all make your own decision.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the changes to the board policy recommended by legal counsel as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, trustees?
No, I just want to echo that this has been a very thorough process and I appreciate all of your hard work and detail to attention on this and we're good.
Yeah, first time we've understood the red, the purple and the cross through.
Most difficult aspect of this.
All right. Any other discussion, trustees? Seeing no, none, I move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Keith.
Okay. All hearts and minds satisfied, I'd like to move to adjournment. Move, meeting adjourned.